So Heather, I understand you're running for school board. At least that's what the sign says.
It does.
It does. Sounds great. So tell us all, my name is Bob Dandy. So I work with various Republican candidates explaining what they're trying to do, how they're trying to serve the community. You're trying to do the same. Tell me a little bit about your background, why you decided to run for school board?
So I'm Heather Christine. I was born in Bethlehem, raised in Nazareth. And I have a son who's 20 in college. And I spent the first part of my career in finance as a financial advisor, then transitioned to higher ed fundraising. And I grew up around higher education with my father, spending over three decades in higher education. So I've always been-
What did he do?
He was, he originally came to Lehigh University as the swimming coach. And then in the late eighties moved over to admissions and then became the director of admissions. And then he retired. I think it was 2012 maybe, I think he retired. So I grew up around education. I've worked in higher ed and I felt a calling to run for school board in Bethlehem. I love the city. I love the district and I feel like they need a new voice on the school board.
Obviously, education in the country and in the community, very important. There's been a large scale discussion going on, especially with the new administration, with regard to the effectiveness of what's gone on with the Department of Education, with the allocation of funding. It's a very expensive investment for the community to make and for the country to make. And obviously, it hasn't produced, I think everybody can agree that that investment has not produced the results that one would expect, given the volume of dollars spent on it. And it's very disappointing, I think, to most people. We spend a lot of time, energy, effort and finances around trying to educate our kids. And our kids are our future. And that mission just seems not to have been accomplished. You know, so I appreciate anybody who comes as an act of public service to try to better that situation and improve the outcome and such. I guess, broad brush, what are you seeing as far as the Bethlehem School District is concerned? I mean, what's compelling you to get involved?
Well, my son went through Bethlehem School District. He graduated from Liberty High School. And I feel, having worked in higher ed, that the students are graduating lacking confidence, focus, direction, they're anxious. The students that I interacted with on campus, they don't want to look you in the eye. They don't want to shake your hand. And I feel like the adults in their life have done them a big disservice by taking the focus off education and focusing a lot on some ideological, political distractions in the classroom. Social media plays a huge part of that. And the district obviously doesn't have control over that. It's just the world that we live in. I think the breakdown of the family is a big part-
Absolutely.
-in why children are not as focused, not as driven. And I just hope to be a voice of reason on the school board. And I hope to give a return to education first, common sense. Let's focus on, you know, the actual academics. Let the children be children. Let's not talk so much about political leanings, ideological leanings, and really let the kids, you know, learn and then maybe even fail because there's lessons in that.
Right.
Give them some personal accountability. Give them some ownership of their academics. And then that will help them build up their confidence and eventually become productive members of society.
Right, right. You know, it's interesting because you and I have talked before about a couple concepts, one of which is institutional neutrality, which I think fits hand in glove with the idea that it should all be about academics whereby there shouldn't be an ideological drive one way or another. It should be about academic performance in the basic subjects and the advanced subjects if you want to go further. Is that your understanding of the term?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, when I was in, in high school and college, I didn't know the political leanings of my teachers. And I shouldn't know that. It should be a focus on the academics first and foremost. And I think the recent, you know, outrage in the wake of Charlie Kirk's unfortunate assassination has shown us that there's a lot of hate and rhetoric that comes from people. And I think the children are learning that. And I think they're learning it in schools and it has to stop.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there can't be an environment that's driven, especially in schools, by anything other than learning math, learning reading, learning all the other subjects that are so important now. Science, technology, STEM we've all heard of and such. And I think we've gotten tragically off course and such. And not that this hasn't been going on for a while, but it's gotten worse lately. I think everybody can sense that.
And it's not unique to Bethlehem either. It is, it is across the country.
Yeah.
It is in every city and state across the country. And unfortunately, the children are, you know, being affected by this. And they're the ones that are going to, in, you know, how many years, need to be the ones taking responsibility in business, in education, and in politics, and in medicine, and in law. And we want productive members of society. We want students that are confident and that can hold their own and be productive.
You've had experience at the university level. I have heard routinely from folks involved in academics at the university level that our children are coming to university generally ill-prepared.
Correct.
Academically speaking, they, they're not even ready for university. And I can, I have partners, business partners, et cetera, who are coming off of a 1950s, 1960s high school education that can swing difficult academic subjects much more easily than our children can in the modern era. I don't understand how we got to this point.
It's a lot of factors, I think. As I mentioned, I think it's the breakdown of the family.
That's one.
It's social media. It's, you know, the attention, the focus has been taken off the important things like reading, writing, arithmetic, history. And it's been replaced by these political discussions, rewriting history, giving the students a pass because maybe they are anxious or, you know, something happened in their life. And of course, those things happen.
Of course.
But it wasn't like that when I was growing up.
No, nor for me.
Those types of experiences where you maybe didn't do well on a test, it gives you grit and you learn from those experiences. When I was at Lehigh in my undergrad, I got a 1.9% GPA my first semester there. My dad worked at Lehigh. And I, you know, of course was, I don't like to fail, but it was, it was difficult. It was a learning experience for me. I needed to learn what I needed to do as a student in order to excel at Lehigh.
Right.
The next semester, I came back and got a 3.3 GPA. So I took responsibility for that. And, you know, through determination and some personal accountability, was able to come back from that really low score.
So it would surprise many of the listeners, I believe, to hear that one of the rising stars statewide in the United States is the state of Mississippi. And that's attributable to, or is called the Mississippi miracle in education. And I believe that the entire genius behind that is simply, they won't allow you to graduate to the next level until you actually can perform to a standard. Seems common sense, doesn't involve any more investment. I don't, why don't we apply that here?
I'm not sure.
Right.
And, and that's why I felt compelled to run because, you know, I feel like, you know, the school board needs, we need to get under the hood and look at, you know, do a comprehensive financial audit. Look at the programs. Look at the admin positions that we have.
Right.
Look at the curriculum-
Right.
-that we are focused on.
Right.
And really make sure that these kids are prepared for life. I mean, because as, you know, enrollment goes down, budgets go up, and test scores go down, there's a disconnect there.
Yeah, I mean, every metric is going the wrong way.
Right.
I mean, how could you be educating fewer, you know, from a, and I'm not saying it's a business, but from a business perspective, I have fewer customers, but the cost to service them has gone up and the performance is worse. That was out of business real quick. More money won't solve that.
Budgets are obviously going to go up. I mean, in an inflationary environment and, you know, over time, budgets are going to go up. Things cost more, so that's understandable. But you would at least expect that the test scores would go up.
Or stay constant.
Or stay, stay consistent and not, not go down.
Right.
So it's, it's definitely a problem. And I think for administrative positions, they just hired a chief pupil officer and-
What does a chief pupil officer do?
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. That salary is going to be $172,500 and-
$172,500 in the Lehigh Valley?
Yes. And, you know, I've had teachers come to me privately who work in the district and have expressed a concern that they, they need help in the classroom. Like their class sizes are going up, they're overworked, they're stressed. They can't give the attention that the students deserve in the classroom. And, you know, that $172,000 could have been put towards, you know, teacher aides in the classroom that could provide more classroom support.
Absolutely.
Last year, I did some community service and I went to one of the elementary schools in the district and I was in a first grade classroom. And the teacher was working with a student that had some neurodivergent issues. And then I was working with another student. And then the rest of the class was kind of just there. I mean, they were all working on papers and stuff. But I saw the individual attention that the teacher and myself needed to give to these two, these two children. And in already large class size, you know, I can see how day in and day out, it's very difficult.
Oh, I can imagine.
And having an aide in the class would certainly be helpful.
Right, so I mean, one of the primary drivers, from what I've seen, in education funding has been the need to administer program after directive, after initiative, after whatever is coming down from some disconnected government entity to the school systems. And all of the budget dollars get disintermediated to managing these programs, which then takes money away from the front lines. As you said, I, you know, fire three to five administrators and hire 10 aides. It's, I just don't-
And at least not hire new ones.
Right.
Which is what they seem to be doing now.
Exactly, exactly. Now again, you know, I'm sympathetic to the fact that local boards, local governmental entities may not be able to get away from the need to administer these programs. But anytime I've been in any sort of council meeting, any sort of school board meeting, any sort of other meeting, the, the problem seems to be so bad as far as administering these initiatives and grants and dollars that even the dollars themselves get unspent or all of the money just gets absorbed in terms of, in terms of the expense of managing the same. And it's, it's, it's really time, I think, for, I don't know. I mean, obviously, you want as much funding as you can driven towards education, but it has to be administered or, or, or driven in a completely different way. And I don't know where to start, except at the local level.
We have to be responsible to our taxpayers.
Right.
And, you know-
On top of it, not only is there federal dollars that are coming in, but the local community is supporting the school districts at such a level from taxation. And you can never get away from school taxes, even if you don't send your children to that district. So the, we were also talking about what the cost per pupil is. In other words, how much does it cost on average per student with somebody through the district per year? What was that figure again?
I believe it's around $27,000 per student, which is a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
A lot, a lot of money for sure, especially with, you know, test scores going down.
Exactly.
We're not getting, the taxpayers are not seeing, you know, results-
Right.
-for the money that they're, they're, they're spending in taxes. And then taxes have gone up this year.
Right.
They're going to go up 4%, which is, you know, a lot for our senior community.
Yeah, people who have already put their kids through the district and now they're graciously contributing to the district for the benefit of the entire community. And yet they're not even getting the value out of it in terms of better scores. You know, and again, as, as we've talked about before, it's not as if clearly, if what's going on has been, we've spent more money, we have fewer students and we get worse results, you can't spend your way out of that problem.
It's not sustainable.
Right, either.
It's not sustainable for the taxpayer, for the district, for the students. It's going to produce, you know, future, future workers and members of society who are not productive.
Right.
Not as productive as past generations.
Correct.
And it's not their fault.
Right.
The adults in their lives have failed them in many, many ways.
Yeah.
And, you know, the programs, the curriculum, the hiring, the spending, the direction of the district, it starts at the school board.
Yeah.
So that's why I want to get in there and sort of get under the hood, do a complete comprehensive financial audit. Look at every dollar that we're spending. Make sure that we're keeping the taxpayer in mind and being a good steward of their taxpayer dollars. And looking at the curriculums and programs that are in place. And then making a no tolerance policy for politics and any sort of-
Clearly.
-ideological leanings or anything in the classroom. Like it should be completely removed.
Yeah.
100%.
Yeah, absolutely.
And let the classroom focus on learning where it should be.
Yeah, I mean, we have, you know, I've, I've talked to students at Muhlenberg College, at Lehigh University. Now, this isn't obviously, you know, the schools in here, but the same thing applies, you know, in schools at this level is that you have students fighting for their academic lives against ideological bent of their teachers or professors. You know, and they're, we're spending money as a community per pupil at a high rate. They're spending money in, in university or college education at, at a very high rate. And it's, we're here to learn. We're not here to be indoctrinated.
Right.
You know, and that, that's very, very troubling. And I would have to say, in terms of your desire to look under the hood, I mean, all we need to look at is, you know, the recent example of, of the Ian Roberts situation in Iowa, where you have somebody who's not even a citizen, somebody with a weapons charge, gets hired as a superintendent of the, one of the biggest districts for a $300,000 per year contract. Nobody's done anything. This party goes on at the school board as if, you know, nobody's minding the store, so to speak. It's, it's incredible to me. And I think if, if you brought some of that common sense approach to how anything is done in government or the school board, you would find that you really need to bring back common sense principles to practically everything.
It, it needs to be in, in people's everyday lives. I mean, we have become so partisan and so divided as a country that people can't see past their own beliefs. They can't even have a conversation with somebody without knowing whether they have a D or an R behind their name. And it's not how it should be. And in schools, it should, the focus should be on education. And let the children grow up, evolve, and come into their own way of thinking without having somebody influencing them. They may get it at home. Obviously, you can't control that. But let them evolve.
Right.
Let them come to their own conclusions on how they feel about things.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we're not giving them a chance at sort of coming into their own if they're constantly being directed and led a certain direction. And, you know, their day should center primarily around education. And then obviously, some physical activity, some social interaction with their friends. That's a big part of school. And, and then go home.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, go enjoy their lives or do whatever that they're doing. But, you know, they need to be prepared for the next generation of work, which is going to be very focused on the STEM subjects, for example. Need to be able to have cognitive reasoning skills. Need to be able to understand the bulwark of Western civilization, which is the if then construct. In other words, that, understand how to build things, how to learn things, how to increase their productivity and such. I'm distressed at how much we're spending and how much effort we're putting in and getting these, these terrible results.
And the students are, are getting a big disservice. I mean, when I graduated high school, my mom gave me a plaque that said, "This above all, to thine own self be true." And when my son graduated from high school, I gave him a plaque which said the same thing. And I wrote a letter to him on the back of it. And I graduated from high school, as did my son, confident, not knowing everything because we learn something new every day. But teachable.
Right.
Driven, looking forward to the future. And, you know, there's a, a big personal accountability and responsibility in being true to oneself. And with the distractions in the classroom and the noise coming at these children, they're not given that opportunity-
Right.
-to come into their own.
Right.
To be true to oneself. Obviously, it doesn't all center around the district. As I mentioned, there is a big social media, you know, issue-
Issue, clearly.
-in this country, especially with kids. And the clicks and the likes and, you know, there's been studies that show that those things take away their distractions, you know, their distractions. Like their phone is in their pocket and they feel that ding of a like or a comment on social media. It's, it's going to take them a little bit to, to recover. I was glad to see the district has instituted a no cellphone policy. I would like to see it, you know, complete K through 12, that they're not allowed in the hallways. And I think the high schools, they can have them in the hallways and at lunchtime. You know, it'd be nice at, at lunch if the kids actually put their phones away and had a conversation with one another.
Yeah, right.
But the adults do the same thing.
Correct.
And, you know, everybody's face is in a phone or a tablet or a computer and we don't talk to each other anymore. It's caused a lot of problems for, for everyone, really.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's time for the adults to, you know, kind of be the adults and think what is in the best, best interest of the students and these children. And school is supposed to be about learning and education. And like, let's keep the focus there.
Right, and, and I commend anybody who is willing to run for anything as far as government position, something for school board or whatever, because it is truly a service to the community. It's a sacrifice on the part of the individual, their time and talent in order to try to make whatever they're working on better. And I can't think of any better endeavor than trying to, you know, have a better outcome for our children, reduce the cost for our community and improve the results. I mean, the, the isomer of all of what you're talking about is we're going to spend less money, have better results that attract more students because it's a better district. That would seem, that is the complete reverse on all metrics of everything that we've done so far. And I know folks have decried the rise in Pennsylvania of some choice. Thankfully, there is some choice. Charter schools and the like. And, and we have, we have a great set of religious schools in the area. All of our communities do, from the, from the Catholic Diocese to the Jewish Day School in Allentown to, I know several mosques that run schools and such, independent Christian churches that do. You can see why parents are voting with their feet and leaving the failing system that we have now, which is a shame. Because if everybody pulled together and actually focused on those academics, you would have people buying into the system hand over fist.
I mean, I'm a product of public education.
Yeah, I am too.
My son, my late husband graduated from Liberty High School. So I'm a big believer in public education. But I think the rise of school choice has made the public education system decline. And it's just sort of been let go by the wayside. So maybe in some of those charter schools and, and, you know, parochial schools that they, they maybe exclude some of those distractions. Maybe they're not permitted.
Right.
And in public education, that's not the case. And I really would love to see a return to the greatness of public education in this country.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and we sorely need it. I mean, we're in a very competitive environment globally speaking. But, you know, it's a shame to hear business leaders like Tim Cook say that while the drive towards manufacturing here in the United States is noble, the fact remains is that we don't have the academic bench of workers. We don't have enough tooling engineers, for example, to be able to do that. And as a result, what, what has gone on has been this, this slow decline of talent here, which is, which is a pathetic waste, in my opinion. I mean, even in the Lehigh Valley, you had technologically leading companies such as Bell Labs, such as, what, even for example, in Bethlehem, Bethlehem Steel was, was a metallurgical forerunner in terms of the things that they did as a company, which helped, again, Lehigh University and vice versa. All of that is gone. All of that is tragically gone.
Yeah, it's sad and it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that way.
Not at all.
And, you know, back in the day when, when you were 18 and you graduated from high school, a lot of people just went right to work in the trades. And they were hard workers and they had grit. They had a responsibility to the family. And there's not a lot of that today.
No.
And, you know, students go to college and they spend a hundred grand, you know, over four years or, or more in, in loans. And, you know, they're coming out not really prepared for life.
Not at all.
You know, it's, it's sad.
Yeah.
And with the, with, with AI and robotics.
Yep.
You know, on the precipice and the things that Elon Musk is doing and others. And the things that China is doing, like we want to surpass anything that China is doing.
Right.
And, you know, I think we need to focus in public education, starting, you know, from kindergarten on up.
Yeah.
With a focused curriculum that's going to prepare these students to be productive in society. In whatever field they want to go into, whether it's the trades, I love the trades.
Sure.
Or it's, you know, law, medicine, engineering.
Right, right, right. And we need more of that. And I think that the public education system has not prepared, less and less so in, in most recent decades especially, you know, our kids to, to be able to do those things. And, and I think it's a downward, self-reinforcing downward spiral whereby kids go through program after program pointlessly, or however they see it to be, further decreases their drive to do better or to put in the work. The parents are discouraged, the kids are discouraged and, you know, they, they come out the other end really in rough shape and we, something has to happen. I think we, we really are at this nexus of, or we're at the, the precipice, as you say, of, of really, we have to make a decision as a country, if we're going to dig in here or not, or we're just going to let the whole system go.
Well, we've lost the ability to work together.
Right.
You know, people look at the political leaning behind my name and what I do for work. And, you know, the fact that I work for a political action committee and what my political leanings are. And they feel that I'm going to inject those beliefs into the school board system and that's just not the case. You know, I believe in personal responsibility.
Right.
I believe in fiscal responsibility. I believe in common sense.
Right.
I believe in letting kids be kids. And, you know, whether I have a D or an R behind my name is of no consequence.
Absolutely not. I mean, again, in, in every interaction I've had with anybody in government, I have stressed in my own communication, the gold standard is excellence in whatever you wind up doing. If it's a government program you want to run, whether there should be a government program or not be a government program, if there is a government program, it should be the best program anywhere in the world. Scott Besson has said, I think astutely, that folks in other countries really buy into their, their systems and their programs because they work, they're efficient, they work. And there's a common sense, common, commonality understanding where everybody is like, hey, we like this, we want this to keep going, we want it to be good. At, at some point, we've all slumped into this mediocrity that, that is going to destroy us.
We need to start talking to one another.
Right.
And finding common ground and being open-minded and not decrying somebody because of what they may feel politically. And the adults need to grow up.
Yeah.
And let the kids be kids.
Yeah.
And let them in school during their day, focus on education.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the heart of it.
Right.
And we need to get back to that.
Yeah, education and healthy socialization, you know, those are, those are the most important things. I think that any public education system can, can give our community. And, you know, I think that's, that's extremely important. Anything else that comes to mind with your run for school board, any other ideas, any other, anything else you want to communicate?
I just like the taxpayer and the community of Bethlehem to understand that I am passionate about education. I'm committed. I will work hard for them. I will get in there and ask questions and be a listener and go in with an open mind. And I will do it with the children, the community and the taxpayers' interests at heart.
That, that's, that's music to my ears. Like I said, we have to get away from it being more costly to get worse results and change that to being more cost-efficient with better results. And with better results, you'll have better enrollment and that cycle will just improve itself over time. So, but I thank you for running.
Thank you.
It is not easy and appreciate you coming to talk to us today about, about all of this. It's exciting. And I'm glad to see people like yourself in the community trying to make things better for us here in the Lehigh Valley.
Yeah, I never thought I'd run for, run for office, but obviously God had other plans.
Yes.
Me and whether the taxpayers and the community and the.
Voters.
The voters in Bethlehem give me an opportunity will, will, remains to be seen.
Well, appreciate you going out and trying to spark the discussion and, and go out and win and, and we certainly hope that you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.